Hi, good afternoon. Welcome to this edition of the Rich Urban Show. We bring you news and views from the education principle point of view. We're very happy to continue this series. Say we have James Southern. He's running for Board of Education, a nonpartisan position here in Jefferson County. The election will be May 14th. Please introduce yourself.
Hey, good afternoon. Thanks for having me and thanks for that plug. Hopefully voters know that this will be decided in the primary. This will not be moving on to November, so we'll decide Board of Education here. By by May 14th. So my name is James Southern and I'm running for Jefferson County Board of Education. I've lived in the area for over 30 years with my wife and son. Not with both of them, obviously, for over 30 years, but my interest in running for Board of Education really stems from my passion for teaching and learning and really a desire to be useful to my community as I get older. I think it's really important to get out and try to support my community instead of just being a passive participant. So I was a teacher for 13 years. When it came time for our son to start school, my wife and I moved back into the Jefferson County Schools District. It's a school system that we're very passionate about and we believe would challenge our son and help him achieve academic excellence. And so we are here. We're interested in supporting the school system and that's essentially why I'm running. And I imagine a lot of the other things people have already read about me or seen in statements where we'll get to question and answer. So I won't spend a lot of time on the introduction.
I was looking at the article in like Spirit of Jefferson. So what are you doing these days? Because it said you had were teaching.
Fair enough. Yeah, so I spent 13 years as a teacher and then I moved into the IT field. And so my first IT gig was actually with hospice of the Panhandle organization. I'm still very passionate about. I was with them for about five years and I still do some cyber cybersecurity contract work for them. But my primary job now is actually cybersecurity. So I'm a contractor with Department of the Interior. That organization has about 77,000 employees and I'm one of the senior analysts on the Cyber Incident Response Center. So everything that happens bad in Department of the Interior, my team handles that. And so it's a it's a busy job, but it's a lot of fun. And I think with all of the digital things that we're moving into, it's a it's a good background to have to kind of look at our school systems who are increasingly being targeted successfully with ransomware attacks.
Yeah, that's a serious thing. Great. On, you know, keeping up with the cybersecurity. Well, what I know you mentioned, that's one thing you're interested in. Other than that, what what do you think is the most critical challenge right now facing Jefferson County Public Schools?
Hard to argue against teacher recruitment and retention as being the the most difficult issue that we're facing. I think in any workforce, if you're having difficulty recruiting and retaining employees, then that makes it very difficult for your organization to maintain its typical business processes. And so that's a huge problem for us, especially in Jefferson County, where a small commute gets you into Maryland or Virginia at a much higher salary rate than what we're able to pay our employees here.
Right. So I've heard talk of like so-called locality pay. Oh, I haven't seen any action on it. I guess it would mean that the state would adjust, I suppose, the I suppose the legislature sets those rates would adjust the rates by county. So clearly like Jefferson or Berkeley would get more pay. Other than that, or do you agree with that? Or other, what would you do to retain and recruit teachers?
So I definitely think that the compensation package is a big part of that. And yes, I absolutely support locality pay. That, as you mentioned, is a state legislative issue. My understanding is it gets brought up every year. I think for the last 13 years in a row, it's been brought up and unfortunately it's not successfully passed. There are four.
By the way, to interject. It seems relatively reasonable. What's the biggest objection to that? Are you aware?
So what I have heard, and I have not researched this myself, and I encourage anyone listening, please, please, please research issues on your own. Don't take anything at face value. It's important that we educate ourselves instead of letting other people do that work for us. What I have heard is that we have in our code built in that all counties essentially have to have the same thing that have to there has to be equality. So we can't have locality pay because then that would make things unequal between the counties. That is what I've heard. And so that is the barrier that we get every year. So if we're trying to pass legislation that is a pay raise for all teachers, it passes. The legislature says, great. But it obviously doesn't have the same weight here as it does in a county that the cost of living is significantly less. Like our good friends in Charleston, Canawha County has lower cost of living expenses than we do. And I think we're one of four or five growth counties in the state. So the inability to have locality pay for us is just killing us. I mean, we're seeing people. And it's not just teachers. I mean, it's hard for custodial staff, bus drivers. They're moving to the other counties that are a short commute for them where they're able to make more money.
Right. So on the issue of budget, I know a recent, maybe the most recent Board of Education meeting that came up. And so there's some controversial things. So two, I'd like a couple of parts of question. Yeah, nothing controversy. Um, so there was discussion of, I guess you're aware that just before Donna Joy came in, they voted, they being Board of Education voted themselves bonuses. They call them stipends. I think that's a misleading word. Their bonuses up to $20,000. One, at least one person gets $20,000 bonus ongoing forever. You know, or well, anyway, each year. And so there was discussion about that. Apparently there wasn't any move to cut that. And then there was a couple of athletic directors that there was discussion. One board member at least, no, two, I think Donna Joy and Ms. Taylor Bratton said that that should be discussed separately. That those there was trying to lump in raising the pay of the athletic directors $20,000 each. Where at the same time, they're saying they're going to be short on the budget. I have other questions too, but maybe let's just start with that. Like, did I say anything like solicit a reaction or you have an opinion about there?
I definitely had a reaction to the $20,000 bonus. Is that is that a central office employee? Are you talking about?
Yes. Okay. Okay. So that's a good distinction. All those bonuses went to the central office. Not that not teachers and they're are ongoing. It took the local paper like two months to three months just to get a clear statement of who was getting what. And in fact, apparently it's not totally clear. I was interviewing Donna Joy and I'll be posting that shortly, of course, as I will yours. That, you know, it's not 100% clear even what the formula is. How it's figured exactly, but they are ongoing. One of them is up to 20,000. I don't think all of them are by any means, but it could be substantial. You know, several thousand, 9,000. Yes, and it is central office staff.
Okay. So one of the things that I talked about in the it wasn't an interview, of course, we had a list of questions and were able to respond to Spirit of Jefferson. And so the budget, I think, requires a lot more analysis to really understand what's going where. So I don't know why that decision was made, but one of the things that I talked about was really taking a hard look at the central office staff. It seems like every third party audit that comes through says that that we're top heavy at the central office. Really like to take a look at that and see if that's accurate and see, I mean, you certainly have to have people working at central office. I don't mean to take away from what they're doing. But that seems like a common place where school systems in general are spending a lot of money because pretty much everyone there is making more money than us than the average teacher. And so a lot of money goes very quickly at the central office. And so that's definitely something I would be interested in in reviewing. And I'm I'm disappointed that it took that long for an official statement to come out. I don't understand why we're not more transparent with taxpayer dollars and just saying, here's what we're looking at. Let's get the public engaged in a conversation about this and let's talk about why we're making these recommendations that we're making. You don't really create trust if you're doing all of your decisions behind a closed door and then people are like, wait, I missed this thing. It happened two months ago. What are we talking about?
Right. Okay.
So for the athletic directors, I'm not sure what they what their current contract was. I think that they're talking about moving them from like a 240 to a 261.
What does that mean? Sorry, I don't know.
So the I'm a 261 day employee. Essentially, I'm a full-time employee.
Oh, I get it.
Most teachers are on what is called a 200 day contract. Some some teachers are on extended contracts. There's a 205, there's two 10s, two 15s, two 20s. As a high school band director, I was on a 240 day contract, which essentially meant that there might be four weeks in the summer that I didn't have anything to do. I can tell you that didn't actually happen, but that's that was supposed to be a 240 day contract. 261 means that you're working all year round. So my understanding was that the move was to take athletic directors from a 240 contract to 261. And it's really easy to look at that and scrutinize when we're cutting positions. So I agree, that probably wasn't great timing and should have been a part of a different conversation and separate. I have worked with athletic directors and they do work those hours. So I don't think that that's an undeserving thing for them. And if you're at any athletic event, you're probably going to see the athletic director there. So there's a pretty heavy daily nine to five that everybody has in addition to their evening activities as well.
Okay. So we're talking about budget and I don't know about Berkeley County or other counties, but probably all counties, but definitely here we have the excess levy. And so the public schools get school budget gets or schools get 78% of our property tax. It's a lot. No, no, 77%. Anyway, either way, the great majority and about 40% of that is so-called excess levy.
Sure.
And so I've done, I've been delving into it. If you look at our website, tell I'm not a big fan of that thing. And here's, here's the deal for me. I think it's kind of sold falsely, like most people probably think, oh, we can't cut the pay. And even teachers were commenting, oh, it'll cut my pay 8,000, which is not true. Well, I looked into it again, there's little transparency. And if I'm wrong, correct me, but none of the teachers got more than two, not 20, one, 2% of the excess levy. They get like one check in beginning and maybe one later. It might be $500,000. I mean, that's nice. But compared to amount of excess levy, it's very small. And then people are probably thinking when they're voting, oh, we're helping the teachers. But in fact, most of it goes to the bloated staff. Or do you have any comments on that thought?
Yeah. So I think this is again, an area where we can really be transparent and just provide people, the taxpayers with a breakdown of what is actually spending so that they can make educated, informed decisions. My understanding of the levy is that it does go to some stipends for teachers. I don't think it's a major source of income, but it does offer them additional monies on top of the state salary.
Not more than 2% as far as I can tell, but go ahead.
Fair enough. And I can't debate that. I would have to look. I do think that the levy also pays for our local libraries. So not just school libraries, but our community libraries. Some of the money goes there. The state also doesn't require fine arts teachers in elementary classrooms. So all of our students that are in elementary are enrolled in what are called specials. We don't call them fine arts for whatever reason at that level.
Okay.
Specials, but that's your library, your music, your physical education, your art. Those teachers, all of those positions are not given to us by the state. So all of those positions are paid for by the levy. So you're talking about cutting all of those teaching positions if the levy doesn't pass. In addition to that, you're adding additional burdens on the homeroom teacher who's not a music or art expert. It's now adding that to their daily curriculum requirements. And so students are not only not getting good education by a specialist in that field, but then we're cutting those positions. Also, many of our athletic coaches at the high school level and perhaps.
Wait, Zach, the music and art. So you're sure about that?
I was.
It's all from the levy?
I'm certain.
I couldn't figure it out. They don't get transparency. It says like, I looked in the paper and they don't have it online anywhere. It says, oh, salaries, 13 million. I guess that's per year or over the five year. Anyway, 13 million for salaries. Well, whose salary, you know?
No, I and I'm with you 100%. I mean, I think that if we can't just give people fluff and rainbows and sunshine and say, good luck, right? I mean, I really think that we need to be very clear about what that money is paying for. Because then I'm a big fan of letting people choose and then they either get the benefits of their decisions or they get the consequences of their decision, right? And so if people don't want to vote for the levy, then they need to understand exactly what that's going to impact, right? We don't want it to be a generic, well, it's, you know, it's going to do, we want to be very specific so people know where their money is going. But the athletic coaching positions, many of them are also not covered by state. And so a lot of the athletics, my understanding that we have those coaching positions and those stipends are paid for through the excess levy.
Okay. Well, yeah.
I've got that on my list, though. I'm going to research that too, because I'm very curious if there is any documentation about specifically line by line, this is the levy dollars that came in and this is.
Let me know if you find it. I'd love to see it.
Fair enough. No, I'll share it. Yeah.
I was talking to one of the auditor candidates.
My money too.
State auditor about the getting the schools on the West Virginia checkbook, which is it's not actually providing that much information, but it does provide spending information for municipalities and counties. But no schools are on it. And I guess they're not going to be unless the legislature, either they volunteer or lobby, which I haven't heard about, or the legislature requires it. So on another topic, like last July, I was actually at that meeting, there was like, I think there were five, four or five teachers on a discipline committee. And they gave a report at that Board of Education in July, in the summer last year about problems. And a lot of the gist of it was that there was there were in state code and regulations, I think a lot of it was in a state code. Sorry, I haven't reviewed in the last few days, so I don't remember exact codes, but there were regulations of how to handle different infractions and stuff. But what's happening, my understanding is, and when, you know, like one of the sitting members was talking about the meeting then, like Donna Joy, is that a lot of times those things don't they don't get actualized. The schools are afraid or not all administrators, but some at least that they'll get blackballed or how do you say, look bad? Because, you know, oh, we suspended X students. And so what in reality sometimes happens and maybe more often than not, depending on, I guess, the school administrator. If a those one or two or few disruptive students, they send the office, you know, for whatever they're doing. Then back they come from the office. Nothing happened. So the teachers trying to do their job, but it's not working. Or do you have any comment on that?
We could probably spend an entire session on this. Discipline is a problem. I've heard that from many people, from teachers, parents. I've heard it from a lot of different folks. So a couple, there are a couple of pieces of the puzzle here. So there is a reporting element and I I can't speak to whether administrators are concerned about what they're reporting or not. That would be a question that would best be directed towards those specific administrators. I do know from a from being a teacher, we did not enforce discipline policies if we did not feel like we were going to get support from our administration. And administrators didn't support us if they didn't feel like they were going to get board office level support for specific policies. An example was, we attempted to ban cell phones at Martinsburg High School. We had parents after phones were confiscated that would come and give their kids new cell phones instead of letting their kids be held accountable for that. So the public didn't support that policy. So the board didn't support that policy. So admins didn't support that policy. So teachers stopped enforcing it, even though it was written. So I think that is one complication. I think that we need to identify the policy. If it's in writing, we need to enforce it. If we don't think that we can enforce it or that it should be enforced, then we need to change the policy. At the board office level or at the school board level, my job is to make sure that administrators and teachers know that they're going to be supported when they're enforcing the policies that are written in code. And I absolutely will do that. The second piece to that that I will say is that most discipline issues come from classroom management problems. So I had a classroom of 85 students that had noise makers. That seems like that would be a nightmare for anybody for classroom management. But I didn't have any discipline issues because students were actively engaged the entire time. If I had to work with the trombones or the low brass section, then the rest of the band was still playing along physically with their instrument and proper playing position. And the percussion were tapping gently on the drums instead of using sticks so that they were orally hearing what was happening. So there was additional education happening. But they weren't just sitting in their chair idly, looking at their cell phone, waiting for the low brass section to finish that little two-minute session that I had to have with them. So what I would also like to see, I told you, we could talk about this all day. I feel very strongly about classroom.
Okay, go ahead. I mean, not all day, but you know.
I hear you. So what I would also like to see is I would like to see us offer training and mentorships for especially younger teachers that are usually the ones that are struggling with classroom management, but not always. And I would like to see us helping those people achieve better classroom management so that we can mitigate most discipline issues before they become a problem.
Okay. So it's kind of a related issue. I mean, it's more like a philosophy issue, not something, but I think it is something to be very aware of. Like I, I work with a nonprofit. We do like absence-centered health education to help you succeed in life. Worked with several thousand students over the years, several hundred in club settings. So point, what I'm getting to is, do you think, you know, what could the school do, if anything, to like strengthen two-parent husband-wife families? Do you agree that the decline of two-parent husband-wife families is a core of all societal problems? I know that's not something that can be legislated, but it's certainly something that affects schools, obviously.
Yeah.
And it'd be nice to know your opinion on it and how that affects things, or if anything can be done to support the parents, be they single or grandparents or guardians or whatever.
I think the breakdown of the family unit has created a lot of the society problems that we're dealing with right now. Honestly, we're very fortunate that every night I'm able to sit with my wife and son and we have dinner together. And we do lots of activities together. That's not always practical in every home environment, but we know statistically speaking, parents that are able to read to their kids, for example, before they start kindergarten, those kids don't have any issues regardless of what reading curriculum that we've selected. They're going to make it through just fine. The kids that are struggling are the ones that didn't have anyone reading to them. The parents then aren't able to check, you know, and make sure that homework's being done or aren't willing or aren't able to reach out to teachers to go, hey, I don't understand this assignment or why this grade came back this way. So that is also something that I'm very interested in because that that's a hard thing to fix. But I would love to see more communication from the school system and more resources to parents to say, here are some of the supplemental things that you can do at home that will help them with the curriculum that we're doing here. And this is how you can help. And it's some, some of it's very simple. Just reading to your kid. That should be fun. That should be an enjoyable activity. I also think that we should talk to parents about screen time. Obviously, I'm not trying to regulate what each parent does in their own home. That's would be incredibly inappropriate for me to do. But just provide them with some data about what screen time does. I know for a lot of families, especially if you've got multiple parents working or shifts, their shift different differentials happening. Sometimes the screen is just an easy way to have everybody get some downtime, but we also know that a lot of screen time is detrimental and can really create a lot of problems in the learning environment. So screens are very important now. We live in a digital world. But that screen time should be monitored. And I think that that if we can provide some resources about the best way to utilize that screen time, the best way to supplement your child's education at home. Because ultimately I think it comes down to parents. I think if the if parents are are doing what they can do in the home, then it really doesn't matter what curriculum we throw at their kid, that student is going to succeed.
Okay. Yeah, right. I mean, also, right. I think, well, let's let's segue into that. So I don't know if you're aware, but well, probably now 30 years ago, wow, there were federal standards at that time. There were, and I think there's still some like grants for absence-centered education and talked about like absence from sex being the standard for school age children. And, you know, that has many, many benefits, you know, if children wait until they're married, you know, get a full-time job. And, you know, finish high school, they're like only a small percent of chance of you know, living in poverty. And if they don't do any of those, there's a large chance. That's one of the things we mentioned.
Oh, interesting. Okay. I'd be interested in seeing that information.
Yeah, I'll send you the, actually, I can send you the slide.
Fascinating. I love data. Data doesn't always tell the whole story, but it's it's a good starting.
Do you think that absence from sex before marriage should be the standard for school age children?
I think that's between that child and their parents. I don't, I would, I think I'm infringing on a lot of parental rights and barriers there if I'm attempting to to make a comment there and certainly beyond the scope, I think of school board.
Oh, okay. Well, or is it? I mean, it is an issue of the emphasis of, you know, what you want to teach. I mean,
Sure. So I.
Because there's going to be some sexual health education in the school, almost surely. So then what does it emphasize? And either there's, you know, a so-called comprehensive approach, which means like usually talking about absence, but only in lip service and then, you know, providing a lot of other information or emphasizing that and talking about, you know, a lot of other issues. I mean, I know since I'm in the field, basically the kind of education I'm talking about covers everything. The only thing within cover is we wouldn't like get a model out and say, now put on a condom, whatever. But everything else pretty well is covered. But go ahead.
So I certainly not an expert on sex education. I, one of the things that it's been part of my platform is that we've got to engage key stakeholders and subject matter experts. I don't pretend to be the smartest guy in the room and I certainly don't have more knowledge than our community collectively. So if I'm not actively soliciting for feedback and asking for subject matter experts to share their opinions, I can't make good decisions. So I don't know that I have a strong opinion about that. I will say from my perspective as a parent, I don't want the school teaching my kid about sex before I have a chance to talk to my son about it. Do I think sex education should be offered? I absolutely do. Because some parents will want their students enrolled in that classroom. And as far as curriculum goes, I don't know that I have a lot to offer there because that's not my area of expertise. But I suspect that there are a lot of experts out there that have plenty to offer about what they think is age appropriate for students to hear. But I that as a parent, though, I want to talk to my son about that. I don't think that that should be something that is mandated by the school system, especially given that the curriculum is approved at a state level, which is far, far away in Charleston, and they have no idea what's happening in Jefferson County, West Virginia.
Yeah. Well, there's no approval of the of the sex ed curriculum. I mean, I've looked at the state standards. It does say absence should be taught, but.
Interesting. Okay.
But in reality, to me, that has little meaning. Even the so-called comprehensive programs say that they teach absence. They say, you know, hey, you should abstain. Now let's get on with whatever they're teaching. I mean, anyway, um, I think.
So you just think it should be a larger focus in the school? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm thinking, well, here's the thing, like, okay, I was actually testifying in 2021 at a Board of Education meeting. They were adopting a new health education curriculum. So I know at Washington High, I guess it was applied to both high schools. Anyway, the high school teachers got together and they did not like the big name curriculum. I don't know if it's Huff, Midland or one of these each companies had a sex ed curriculum. And they did not like the the part about the chapter on sex education. So for those type of, I guess, schools and teachers and parents, they offer a version without it. So they opted not to get it. Whereas the middle school took the curriculum, I did look at it and not to say there's nothing wrong with it. It's kind of neutral. But apparently the high school level is a little more explicit and the teachers were not comfortable with it and they did not take it.
Now that you mention that, I do remember the health teachers at Martinsburg High School were responsible for teaching sex education. And I do actually remember that being a point of contention that the health teachers were skipping over it because of personal discomfort. So if that's the case, but it's supposed to be in the curriculum, that to me, that's an issue. And so we would have to address that. And I would, I would want to reach out to those teachers and find out why they're uncomfortable and what we can do to make that more comfortable. Because if the parents don't want to discuss it at home and they do want that their child enrolled in that classroom instruction, then I want to be able to provide that opportunity.
Yeah, I think being in the field, as I said, probably, I mean, I have didn't see what they were reviewing, but I have seen, you know, many different curricula. They're probably uncomfortable with the emphasis. Like if they start getting into, you know, saying, you know, how to use different types of birth control or a very contentious issue. And until eight years ago, I was living in DC and I taught the worked mainly in DC public schools. A contentious issue was how to present or if to present the whole LGBTQ thing. So they started in DC saying that in sixth grade, instead of just talking about, you know, girls and boys, whatever, you may be attracted to the same or opposite sex. They wanted to put that. And in fact, I think we were unsuccessful. I didn't think that was right. I, they put that in there. So then they're planning, you know, in the curriculum ideas that people might not want. Well, maybe parents don't want their children to be told, hey, Joe and Joe and whatever Bill had this relationship, you know, because whether it's explicitly stated or implied, it's not something, I mean, what they're doing or not doing, it's not something that parents want. So I think it's probably that kind of thing, almost surely. Yeah.
Interesting. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have a lot of comment there other than again, we talked about transparency. I think that parents should know what's in the curriculum. And so if we have curriculum maps and guidelines and we're able to say, hey, we're covering this, then parents can make better choices about what content they really want their child exposed to and what content they would prefer not to have their child exposed to. Especially if it's not mandated curriculum. Obviously, curriculums get mandated at the state level, so we have little control locally over some of those items.
I don't, yeah, I'm not aware of that. I need to find out more about. What I mean is I know there's standards and like in the health, it's a very vague standard.
The content standards.
Yeah, like I know that in the sex education thing, to me, it's almost meaningless. I mean, yes, I I do believe it happens there. But knowing how the field is and all many curriculum out there to just say, you should teach absence. It's like, oh, okay. You know, you could just give a few sentences and it's a, and if someone asked, did you teach absence? Yeah, I said the kids should abstain, you know?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I do. This, I do. And the standards are, are, are vague because they're intended to be a guideline and then counties adopt curriculums that meet those state guidelines, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that would make sense. I think in your statement and the spirit, you talked about school community relations and a related issue would be. Like how would you improve them? Do you welcome like volunteers in the. Classroom or special ed classroom or any kind, like parents or community volunteers?
Yeah, I, I know there, we have to find a way to do this and, and make it safe. I know that there's a lot of concern from administrators about people in the building and I certainly understand those concerns. Um, but. The only way that I think that the school system is going to better serve the community is if the community is more involved. I want to see the school system advertising more. About what we're doing. I've been to some events, uh, especially during the campaign trail that. Didn't have a lot of people attending because I don't think a lot of people knew about it, but I thought. Wow, this robotic stuff is really cool. I would have loved to have had that opportunity. Obviously it wasn't big. I'm a little older. Uh, it wasn't a big thing when I was going through Jefferson County schools, but, um. We've got to advertise more what we're doing and we've got to get the community more involved in what we're doing because ultimately the school system. Serves the community at large, right? I mean, we're trying to take our young people, give them a chance to change their story. And get them to transition into successful adulthood, whatever that looks like for them.
Okay, so as you're coming to a conclusion, how would you, if you care to differentiate from your. Opponents? I know there's two other people running, including the incumbent. And if I'm right, there's two positions decided, right?
There, there are two positions, um, and there are three people running. And so there are no. There are no district issues for this particular election. Um, each district can only have two candidates. So for example, Charlestown already has two candidates. So if there were. A third person running from Charlestown, I, they should just stop because they wouldn't be able to be elected.
Right, right.
Um, we don't have any of those restrictions this election, election. So there are two seats, three candidates. So the top two candidates will win both seats. Um, there are no other issues there. So a couple of things that I will say that I think, uh, I won't necessarily differentiate me. I've been very careful not to run. Uh, a confrontational or adversarial campaign. I think that we. We can be positive and work together with all stakeholders to move forward. Um, a couple of things that I'll say that I think I bring to the table is successful teaching experience. And I, I emphasize the word successful. Because if you look at my thirteen year career, I held lots of leadership positions and achieved lots of accolades. Uh, my peers recognized me for, um, or nominated me for, um. Teacher of the year and also for West Virginia Bandmaster of the Year. I did not achieve these leadership positions and these accolades by not being successful. And I think there's a big difference between successful classroom experience and classroom experience. Um, the other thing is that I have a child in the school system. So I'm absolutely invested in the successful outcome and there are no arbitrary decisions. When you're directly impacted by those decisions. Uh, and I'm more involved because my child, obviously going through the school system, ears to the ground, you hear a lot more things than if you're not involved in the school system at all. The final thing and the most obvious thing is my cybersecurity experience. Uh, since August first, one hundred and thirty two schools and universities have been successfully targeted with ransomware. These are private counseling notes. These are IEPs. This is sensitive financial information. Disciplinary actions, all of this stuff being stolen and then posted on the dark web for anyone that wants it. Because school systems aren't paying ransoms and I wouldn't encourage them to. Um. We can do a lot with the tools that we currently have to significantly increase our cybersecurity posture, but we can't do that if we don't have anyone. With cybersecurity experience. Helping to make those changes. Our IT staff is incredibly overwhelmed. There's a very small number of them serving a very large group of people. And so having someone else come in that understands what they're trying to do and can help them push forward positive. Positive changes in that area, I think is incredibly important and I work in cybersecurity every day. I don't just have a degree in it. I'm actively doing it. And the organization that I serve has seventy seven thousand employees.
One thing we didn't explicitly cover, we did talk about it though. Is that, um, like compared to Kinnaw County, for instance, which is the largest school. District in the state, they have, um, I don't know the exact number, but relative to the number of students, I think it's something like eighteen thousand or something. They only have a little more staff than we have. In other words, which we touched on, we have a bloated staff. And on the other hand, we have a, or not supposedly. The school enrollment has declined a thousand students in the last tenure, not increased. Yeah, maybe two things to wrap it up, um. Yeah, would you support maybe trimming that? And what also, if you want to comment on what do you think about like school choice, like the Hope Scholarship or having. A charter school like we do, is that good, bad, indifferent?
Uh, so actually I have mixed feelings about the Hope Scholarship. I think that's a great question. I know that's something that a lot of folks are talking about and so I'll just be candid. Um, when I first looked at the Hope Scholarship, like a lot of people, my immediate reaction was, oh my gosh, we can't afford to take money from the public school system. What I have heard since then and what I'm interested in investigating further is that. I'm going to make up numbers a little bit, but they're ballpark. So bear with me here. So let's say that the Hope Scholarship is forty five hundred dollars. So they give that student forty five hundred dollars and that student was going to get that money from the Public Education Fund regardless of the school that they attended or homeschooling or whatever, right? But let's say that the state allocates seven thousand per student. Well, so then the students that take advantage of the Hope Scholarship potentially were getting an extra twenty five hundred dollars that goes back into the Public Education Fund. So if that's the case, then it would be hard not to support that. Um, I do think that school competition can be very healthy and I don't think that has to be scary. I do think that we need to earn parents and students enrollment in public schools and we shouldn't just assume that they have no other options. Um, so I do have mixed feelings about it. The, the school that we have locally, the, um, the charter school is actually canceling their. High school next year. So they're not doing well. As it turns out, it's difficult to run a school system. So what I anticipate is that some of those students are going to choose to come back. So we're going to go through probably. I'm going to make up a three year to five year adjustment period where our numbers will be affected by the Hope Scholarship. And then it will balance out and I think ultimately. We should be getting more money back into the public school system because of the Hope Scholarship. That's my understanding. I need to research that further.
What about that?
One of your questions.
Thing about the bloated, yeah, bloated staff.
So when you say staff, are you talking about teachers or are you talking about?
No, no, not T, okay, didn't clarify. I should say the central office staff.
That, that is absolutely something that we need to look at. Um, if, if we are spending more on central office staff and that's taking money away from. Student instruction and student learning, uh, then we're going to have to, we're going to have to cut those positions. I don't know what positions those would be. That requires a pretty in-depth analysis of the budget. That's something I think that the public should be aware of, um, and there should be transparency there. But I think that we really need the assistance of a third party auditor to come in and show us. Okay, here's where you are. Here's where the average school system is and are we above or below that line with administrative staff? We don't need more people trying to mandate what teachers are doing in the classroom. We need, we need more teachers in the classroom.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, well, we've had a good discussion, so I hope that it helps people decide. Thank you again for. Uh, coming on today. I really appreciate your time. And we'll get it out on the Rich Urban Show on any podcast platform or on visionroot.org. We have the, also the video podcast.
Thank you very much. Hope you have a great afternoon.
Okay, thank you. All right, take care.